advertised it on the on the project webpage and and through our email list that we've been compiling since phase one of the project. We had approximately fifty participants. There were about eighteen community members that joined in person and another thirty-two that joined via Zoom. We got some pretty positive comments in the Zoom chat following the presentation. Overall, people seem to be pleased with the phased approach for the project and the pace that the town was setting for updates and changes. Following the forum, we got fifty-eight survey respondents to the post-event survey. There were also thirty-seven contributors to the mapping exercise. And overall, we ended up gathering sixty comments through the social pinpoint mapping. So after the, after the presentation, we asked community members to prioritize proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw based on priorities that the planning board had, the list of priorities the planning board has supplied to us, which was generated from phase one as well as and there had been some modifications and updates since that. Participants, both in person and online, were asked to, to indicate the level of importance for each topic area. And the aim of the exercise was to help the planning board determine which amendments, which amendments to prioritize based on resident interest and also to help determine which amendments may require enhanced consensus building and engagement moving forward. Based on the gathered feedback, uses, site plan review, and enforcement were ranked the top three most important priorities, followed by special permits, codifying the general zoning district and definitions. And then lastly, affordable housing and scenic roads. So comments from the, from the survey about uses emphasize the need to incorporate modern uses and for the bylaw to provide greater clarity in the types of uses to help guide future development. There were, there were positive comments about the use of site plan review to help regulate proposed development. A lot of people had positive comments and thought it would be a thought that it's a useful tool for helping to maintain the town's character. There were, there were a number of comments about similar to similar to uses. Participants noted that the bylaw should have updated definitions that have clear and precise language in order for the bylaw to be better interpreted and for for, for it to be easier for the the, the town who was administering the zoning to be able to make determinations. Some, some survey participants noted that greater enforcement was needed in order to support changes or improvements to the, to the, to the bylaw. There were, there were comments that noted, we can make all the noting that the town could make several improvements to the bylaw, but unless they had staff to be able to enforce it, that it, it wouldn't really, it wouldn't be as effective. There were, there were mixed comments about special permits and the need for the need for flexibility as well as clear and, and well-defined procedures for, for the special permit process. There were also very positive responses and comments about how codifying, about codifying the general zoning district. There were there were more general comments about zoning districts and land use regulations and the use of the use of these using these as planning tools to help maintain order and as well as the town's existing character. And there were a range of comments related to affordable housing. Some survey respondents noted the importance of providing local workforce housing. Some survey respondents noted the some, some survey respondent said that housing affordability wasn't a an issue for them, so they really couldn't relate to to the issue or the topic of affordable housing. And then others felt that affordable housing was an important topic for the town and the bylaws to address. However, they noted that that responsibility, they they noted that there was a question of whether that responsibility lies with the local municipality or with the state. So in terms of the, the mapping exercise, community members submitted sixty comments on social pinpoint through the mapping exercise. The, the prompt asks participants to mark the location on a map of places that were meaningful to them and then to use three words to describe the, the characteristics of those places. Some people followed the prompt and then others just provided more general comments about the town itself. In total, there were forty-five descriptive words that were submitted to characterize various locations throughout town. There were fourteen comments about historic resources and features in Essex. Twelve comments related to the town's natural and environmental resources and eight comments about land use and zoning in general. And sorry, can you go back just one second? This is a word cloud that just highlights some of the the repeated themes throughout the submitted comments. As you can see from, from the map, from social pinpoint, there were comments submitted about several different areas throughout town. I'll also note that we had a higher level of participation in the online mapping exercise versus the, the physical map that was set up at the in-person presentation. So the purpose of the exercise was to gather input from the community, the purpose of the mapping exercise was to gather input from the community that would help to start define that would help to start divine and characterize different place types in Essex. And this is, place types is something that we've kind of talked about, but I wanted to provide some additional detail about what we mean. So place types are somewhat a hybrid approach to traditional equidient zoning and form-based code. They, they provide a set of they, they set an aspirational direction for future development and they also play a critical role in in helping the community achieve its overall vision in terms of development. There are five different components to, that make up a place type. There's land use, key characteristics, mobility, building design, and then corridors, open space, and edges. The land use provides language. The land use component provides guidance on what types of uses, both principal and accessory uses that are encouraged and in a, in a particular place type as well as the intensity of that use. The key characteristics provide a more, a broad picture of the characteristics that make up the place type and highlight identifiable things like building type, lot size, as well as site layout. This this is an example of how we would, how we plan to incorporate the descriptive words that we gather from the mapping exercise and and how we'll use that information to, to start to create these characteristic descriptions for different place types. So the example on screen is neighborhood one place type, which is characterized by single-family detached structures that are set back from the street and general, and are generally consists of lot sizes ranging from blank square feet to blank square feet. They support opportunities for rural lifestyles and connectivity to scenic and ecologically diverse open spaces. The the words that are bolded and capitalized are, are words that were submitted from the mapping exercises. Mobility describes how people travel to and within place types and provides guidance for street typologies, site access, pedestrian features, as well as trails. The building design component provides guidance about the form, the placement, and the orientation of buildings with, within a specific place type. And it also speaks to how the building interfaces with the, the public realm. And lastly, corridors, open space, and edges describe the types of open space typically located within within a place type. It also provides guidance for travel corridors, which create connections to different areas of town and green corridors that link the town's network of open spaces to the, the built environment. Edges form the, the boundaries of a town and they also punctuate gateways and transition zones along the major corridors. And the image that's on screen now is an example from the town of, from Newton. They they use a, a lot of these elements in their, in this document. And they don't necessarily call them place types, but a lot of the characteristics and things that I just described are also included in their pattern book. You can kind of see that they, the map that's on screen, they've highlighted different place types throughout town and they've also provided a written description of the characteristics for each of the locations as well as visuals, diagrams, and aerial photographs of of characteristics in certain areas.
So maybe before we move on to the next, we can pause and see if there are any questions about the, or reflections from the forum?
I, I thought the, the, the list bylaw priorities, how you sort of mapped that was good. The uses that you, uses site plan review enforcement, special permit, that, that's very helpful for us. So I also wanted to, since we're in this kind of confused situation, I wanted to make sure there's other who's here is, is Shelley and Dana and Judd and Matt and Charlie Story and Meg Nelson and Ruth is here with us as well. So I just wanted, Andrea and Courtney and Simone, since you're not here, just so you know who's here in the room with us. So because all you could see is my grouchy little face. Anyway, okay. I just wanted to end with that because as you guys are talking, I'm realizing you don't know whether there's like, you know, one person here or eighteen people here. So we are. Thanks. Okay. If you guys have any questions or comments so far from, from what you've heard about the forum feedback, now's your chance.
I also just note that I, I put together a, a brief summary sheet that has all of the submitted comments so that you can kind of just take a look at it and, and see what people are saying at your leisure. I'll share that following the tonight's meeting.
That'd be great. Thank you, Courtney.
All right. Hearing none, maybe we'll keep rolling. So thanks, Courtney. That was a good overview. So we also wanted to talk about the April twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth work session that a few of you attended, but wanted to let the whole planning board and Board of Selectmen know that we had a really good about two-hour work session. We have a good group of ambassadors. About half of these folks could join us on the twenty-sixth. And then we've been keeping in contact with them via email. Dana has been the point person for the ambassadors and I think we'll be moving forward. But it's really nice to see some there tonight. I know a few attended last week's meeting with Chris talking about the form-based code. So it's really good to have this additional group of folks involved in the project. On the twenty-sixth, we met and really talked about, you know, what is good community engagement kind of at a high level, not just for this specific project, but overall, you know, whenever you're working and hearing about things going around in town, what do you consider as good community engagement, good practices for making sure that the public knows what's going on in a community and what the town is up to? And what is not good community engagement? It was, I think, good to kind of get both of those things out on the table. We spent a lot of time talking about the reason why we want to do good community engagement and especially for this project, why it's really important to the planning board and the Board of Selectmen to really be transparent and both educating and informing the residents of Essex of what's going on, but really giving ample opportunities for people who are included in the project and just, you know, interested in what's going on, opportunities to engage in different ways, ask questions, and get familiar with what's being talked about with zoning updates. And then thinking about what does it mean to empower through community engagement? We talked about, you know, making sure that residents, when they go to the town meeting, they feel empowered to make an educated vote on zoning warrant articles. So hopefully as you're working through this process and we know it's going to be over the years that you'll continue to go back to these community engagement principles that the ambassadors really worked on at this first work session. We started at the end of the session to really get into the stakeholder analysis. So thinking about the different ways, networks, individuals, groups to reach all of the residents in Essex and different stakeholders like business owners, volunteer groups, different folks. And so we are in the process of scheduling the next meeting where we'll dive into the stakeholders and look at different opportunities for really engaging and getting the word out about the project. We're still trying to figure out the date for that, but stay tuned. We'll be coordinating after this meeting to get some of the details for this part of the work. But would like to pause here and see if anyone who attended the work session has any reflections or things that you'd like to share. We also have a summary of the event that I can share with the planning board and Board of Selectmen. So you can see kind of a summary of all of the things that were discussed.
It was good. I mean, Matt was I couldn't tell, thought it was all started. No, it was good.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah.
I was the, the, I liked the conversation and the fact that you're going to pick up more on the stakeholder analysis and, and really diving into where we can reach people and, and what are the networks, what are the organizations, how, how do we get out there? And, and it, because obviously that's the important step of the the most important function of the zoning ambassadors is to get out there. So identifying those avenues is going to be really helpful. Give us more of a focus and, and a place to go with it.
Yeah, yeah. It's always nice to talk about the theoretical, but then we all want to go to the, okay, what's, what's the marching orders for getting the word out? So that'll be a good shift in focus. And then congratulations that the town meeting was a success and the reorganization bylaw passed. So we heard via email, but we haven't seen you all since then. So we wanted to just have an opportunity for you to share any like feedback that you heard at town meeting about the process or the, the reorganization. And then maybe let us know the next steps for getting the reorganized bylaw on the website or any updates that you want to share with us as it relates to the project.
It was the single most boring planning board article in the history of the world because I spoke for my entire five minutes at a rapid pace and everyone was probably like watching their checking their phone and stuff. And when I was done, I used up all of my five minutes and no one had any comments and everyone voted okay. And it was just, it was the most anticlimactic.
No questions, nothing.
It was declared a unanimous vote, but I saw one guy who, who did a little quick with his card, but then decided not to vote against it because no one else was. So they called it unanimous, even though there was one guy who like kind of didn't want to vote for it. That's just because he doesn't like me. He doesn't know anything about the bylaw. He doesn't know anything. He just saw me at the microphone and wanted to vote no. So I know how that went. Anyway. So that, that's the town meeting somewhere.
That's great. I think that's a good, good indicator of hopefully not having outright opposition to something that was very kind of basic and needed just to make it more user-friendly. So that's a good first step. All right. Well, with that, I will note that we have started to do the working group meetings. So we met with a few folks last week or the week before, my weeks are running together and started to have some good conversations about dimensional regulations and enforcement and different topics. We are trying to schedule the next set of meetings, the doodle poll. It's always challenging to get people's schedules compatible. So I need to follow up with a few folks and try to get some new dates on the calendar. But thank you to those who we have met with and will continue to kind of have those conversations and bring them into future meetings. So now we want to shift and talk about taking what you heard last week and that overview of what form-based code is at like a higher level and talking specifically about Essex and where we see opportunities for the bylaw itself to, you know, start to integrate some of these form-based code ideas and really work to achieve what you all want, which is to, you know, maintain the small town feel and make the user, the bylaw more user-friendly and have better protections for the residents. So we've been kind of thinking of this as codifying your general zoning district. We know that you all have been administering the zoning, like you, you do, you have ninety-eight percent of the town in the general zone, but your bylaw doesn't actually say anything about the general zoning district. You kind of just know you're either in the downtown southern Canoma Point or other Canoma Point district, or you're just out in the rest of town and then those regulations apply. So to make it really clear for, you know, residents and anyone who wants to try to build in Essex, we think that it would really help the, the bylaw to just clearly state what is regulating the other, that ninety-eight percent of town. So that's what we mean by saying codify the general zoning district. We know that this is a problem. The, the general district has a few problems that, you know, any uses are allowed. You don't have really strong site plan review and special permit processes. And this has really been an issue for residents. We heard that loud and clear in phase one and we've continued to hear that. So we kind of think of this as two steps, two ways of thinking about it. So the first is you now have your reorganized bylaw. You have a new section six-three and that's where you have your establishment of districts. That's where we relocated the downtown district and your Canoma Point districts. So we would suggest as a kind of a minimum, you create a section that just acknowledges the general district as that ninety-eight percent area and you add a description and purpose. And this goes back to what Courtney was just talking about, that you're getting a lot of feedback from the public on what that general district should be, what it should be regulating, how it should be impacting the built environment. And so how can we take what we're hearing, those descriptive words and translate it into a description and purpose for what can occur in the general district? We would recommend showing it on the map. So instead of it just kind of being that ninety-eight percent that's blank, just having it have its own kind of color and saying like this area, if you fall in this area, then this is what, how you're regulated. It, it's not one of the other three districts you have. You already regulate by building type. So we would recommend that you continue and build on those existing principal buildings and fix some of the gaps that we've seen and have been identified. And then we know that you want to do some work on your use regulations. So we would recommend that you add a new table that's connected to the building type. So it's easier to understand what's allowed and then you can go on and modify from there. So that would be kind of administrative fixes to just make it clear for, you know, an average person who's picking up the Essex zoning bylaw to try to understand if their property is in that ninety-eight percent, what applies. But we know that you want to not just do that, you want to make some improvements along the way to have some protections for residents. So we have been thinking about different ways for you to make slight improvements to address those community priorities and the things that came up in phase one. So we put some of the different things that we've been hearing up on the screen here to just highlight. We're trying to, as we're, you know, doing our work back at MEPC of how we can recommend different tweaks. We're trying to keep these things in mind because we want to make sure that whatever we propose is really in line with what you all have told us and what we're hearing from the public. So we're thinking So we're thinking of, you know, making sure that there are protections against the citing of incompatible uses. We know that that's not really embedded in the bylaw now, so we're trying to keep that in mind. We know that you have few regulations that really manage the look and feel and scale of development. So we're trying to think of ways that you can um improve in that area. We also know that there's a lot, not a lot of regulations that are really accounting for how your citing development and especially um how properties are regulated by different access points. And then we know that you want to make sure that you're not growing too much or growing inconsistently with the way Essex is today. That rural small town feel and with a lot of precious environmental resources that you want to make sure are protected into the future. Um, the blue boxes are a couple of things that we identified in phase one through the zoning audit that we know your building typology has some gaps. You don't have a definition or category for civic or institutional or public uses. And then we also know that it's kind of confusing for those who aren't familiar with the bylaw. What is really, how it's regulated, going back to that issue of the, the ninety eight percent is not clearly um spelled out in the bylaw. So with all of that in mind, we have kind of uh put together a few different options that we want to discuss tonight. And then at the end of these slides, we'll have some um other ideas that we can dig into a little deeper and come back with um options for you next time. But the first thing that we, we know is a big priority for you all is that you really want to make sure that you are kind of addressing those incompatible uses, that you are managing the types of uh buildings that can happen. And we see kind of an easier fix than going straight to, you know, establishing new districts and doing a full district zoning approach. But rather thinking of what you're already doing, you regulate by principal buildings. That's the section of your bylaw here on the left. So why don't we just build on that and have that be a little bit more descriptive? Going back to what Chris and Courtney were saying about the benefits of form based code, you can add a lot more description and um explanation and and just direction into what you want to have developed. So instead of just having your table with the words and the list, why don't we try to have more illustrative diagramming to show the different types of buildings? Then maybe you don't just have business as a category, but maybe you have a few different types of commercial buildings that you allow. And then you again go back, going back to definitions, you define what that means a little bit more clearly. And then you could have different standards based on that building type. So again, you already do that, but let's maybe try to refine it based on the building type and get a little bit more specific. And by doing that, I think that you'll naturally start to have more protections and reassurance that your n- neighbors and people in town know that a, a thirty thousand square foot big box store is not going to go maybe. Or um things like that. You'll just have a little bit more clarity as to what would be um involved. So the, the example on the right is from Situate, one of the communities that Chris highlighted last week. Um, they have a really good example of building types and definitions. So I can pause here and we can discuss, or I can walk through all of the options and then we can pause and discuss. Do you have a preference?
I, I guess I would say continue on. Um, this is all really good information and, and it's a lot of food for thought. And it's so much food for thought. I haven't yet processed it to have um questions on it yet. So I, I would say keep going unless anyone else has questions on it right now.
Yeah, keep going.
Okay.
And if, if anyone else has questions, it's just, it's, it's, this is all new for us. So we're, we're all sitting here just sort of taking it in, I think.
Totally understand. Um, so the next thing that we have been thinking about is again, trying to make sure that as uses are allowed, that you're thinking about what uses make sense in what locations, based on the existing infrastructure and just general location in town. And so on the left, you can see just to kind of visualize that, you all know this, all uses can pretty much go anywhere, including your scenic roads. That's something that has come up as an issue. And so one of the things, again, a situat example, is that you can start to think about regulating uses by street type. And that gets at, you don't want really intense uses on a really small residential road, for instance. You want to try to have uses and intensity of uses in line with the intensity of the kind of environment and infrastructure around it. And so we think that one way that you could modify your bylaw and it would be a more subtle tweak, but accomplish some of the goals that you all have in mind is to think about the roads that you have in town and I um create some different street types. So maybe the main roads are, you know, your, in this case, the parkway, maybe the, the biggest, most um heavily trafficked roads. That's where you can ha- allow more uses. But on your scenic roads, some of your more um smaller capacity residential roads that are really narrow, maybe that's something where you really want to limit the uses to just residential, maybe like small scale um commercial, you know, different things. So thinking of right sizing the types of uses and the intensity of uses to the street and the streetscape so that you're having a better match, but still keeping that flexibility of not doing the full district approach. Um, the next thing that we have been really trying to think about is how can we, without going the full blown district approach, help the bylaw better um convey that you really want development to have a certain scale, look, feel to it that's in line with what's already in Essex, the small town like rural um character. So right now on the left, you can see that your bylaw doesn't really address any sort of design guidelines. Your site plan review criterion talks about town character, but it's not really descriptive. It's left up to the interpreter, what harmonize the surrounding townscape means. And so we see some opportunities with the form based code approach to start to introduce more um conceptual guidelines and diagrams that can really show someone who's wanting to make improvements to their property, what kinds of design and um architect standards and um facades, typologies really would fit in with Essex and not be looked at as, oh, that's really crazy. Why did that go there? But instead it, it'll fit right in. And so the example on the right here is from Ashland where they have some diagrams that um they put in to an, to guide really developers coming in who were wanting to do different types of buildings. But we could, you know, look at the existing architecture that already is in Essex and maybe develop some of these diagrams so that you can feel a little more confident that when a developer is coming through the site planner review process or permitting process that they have a little bit more um guidance to make sure that the design and built form is fitting in with the town. So those are kind of the three that we want to get your feedback on tonight, whether you like this kind of general approach. And then we can continue to kind of narrow down and bring more specific um recommendations to, related to Essex. But we didn't want to go down that path too far before you gave us kind of the green light to say, yeah, we really like having these diagrams to guide development. Or yeah, we really like the street type um idea. Let's pursue that. So we were hoping to get some direction on those tonight, but then we also have a few other topics that we can talk through. Um, and th- these are ones that you maybe want to think more about because they're heavier lifts. They do um kind of go beyond that some of the uh already things that you have, you have in your bylaw. But they really correlate with things that we've been hearing from the public. So I can walk through these quickly, but we know that it's really important that Essex protects the existing environmental resources and you have a lot of residents concerned with climate change and flooding. And so there are opportunities as you're thinking about updating the bylaw to enco- include resiliency elements, things like stormwater management, low impact development standards, um citing uh things in areas that are not likely to flood, building on the overlays that you all already have. Um, we also have heard, you know, that it's really important that there are, you know, places that are preserved and open space. And so something that you could consider is requiring public benefits when larger developments are proposed. We know that there haven't been a lot of large developments and this may not be a concern for you all, but it may not be a bad idea to contemplate that, should you have someone come in and want to do a large development to think about how you can make sure that you're requiring some public realm improvements um in developments of a certain size. And then lastly, revisiting the idea of doing something like an agricultural or open space overlay. This would work on top of your general district and it could really help to preserve some of those existing agricultural areas and places of environmental sensitivity. Um, without having to go the full district approach, you could just apply it as an overlay as you've done with some of the other overlays that you already have. So I know that was a lot to digest, um, but I'm happy to pause here or go over the last couple of slides that are really more about modernizing and just making the bylaw a little more graphic.
Andrea, can you go back to that first slide?
Sure.
Thank you. So when we say that says lots of design, see that? No, this, I know this is just an example. Let's see where it says on the right hand side, under the situate, it says design standards. Are those the requirements? Like, would they be considered? The chart on the left?
Yeah, I think normally a building height would definitely be a requirement. Um, street facing walls would be a requirement. Um, yeah, those would all be requirements and you don't have to have all of those, but in this case they are required.
So the design standards are the requirements. And then on the slide?
On this one?
Yeah. This one was secret, but it says building standards, but there was it was another, uh, maybe it was the next one. Okay, there was design guidelines. For some reason I got guidelines in there.
Yeah.
It's in the, it's in the text, in the, on that slide, the next slide.
So are those, are those requirements or?
Guide, guidelines are more suggestive. Um, yeah, but they're typically not something that that's regulated like, um.
That's the
Yeah, there's rules versus recommendations.
Right, just trying to get this.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this would be a recommendation, but not requirement. Whereas these would be required, stand you.
Right, yeah, we just want to be clear on that when we're, what are rules and what are recommendations, I think.
So you're saying the typology, the recommendation?
Yeah.
Well, it, it could be whatever we want. I mean, that, that's kind of up to us to craft that and propose it in a way we think is going to work for us.
And what the goal of a guideline is, well, what I'm thinking is to address the town.
Right.
Guidelines keep going a lot of different directions, you know, but for this one, no. And then, uh, Andrea, back to that first slide. It seemed like, see the general uh illustrative diagram there?
Mm-hmm.
Those are ones, those are, they seem like they're, they're all I think they're all some form of like a business, because a general commercial building is a business. But these are examples of variations of the left-hand table.
Yep, exactly. And you, you can make whatever categories you want. So they have just like a general commercial building, but you could maybe do, like you have industrial class A and B. You could even do like a small scale commercial that's maybe limited with square footage and a larger scale commercial that has a different square footage requirement. Um, you can, you get to decide whatever building types you want or want to expand to.
Something that's a little separate um from what you're talking about, but I just want to point out to you guys and to um people here, and Ruth, if you could just fact check me on this, just to make sure that I don't mistake anything. But a lot of development in Essex has development hasn't happened much in Essex compared to surrounding communities because of our limitation on sewage. Um, we're limited with Gloucester, with our agreement with Gloucester about how much sewage we can offer businesses i- in the sewer, sewer district. Outside of that, you're on your own on septic, which the ground limits it because we have um some topsoil over clay and rock. Um, but that's sort of been a de facto situation for, for, since we put the sewage system in. Um, and it's something that could change in the future. We have to renegotiate with Gloucester and there's an opportunity, Gloucester may see an opportunity in that and reconstructing the wastewater plant that they could add capacity in Essex to help them defray the cost of the construction of their plant. So they could very well offer us more sewage and it would be basically part of the agreement. And we couldn't necessarily say, no, we don't want any more sewage. We just want to continue to pump it into the ground like we always have. Uh, the other thing that is even larger on the horizon is the potential for a regional sewer and water system that Senator Tar is talking about, that would be all of Cape Ann and maybe any area even larger than that. In which case we would be really tapping into an unlimited sewage capacity. And my point in saying that is when we think about Essex, we think about the way it is now and keeping it the way it is now. But if these, if these valves literally open, these floodgates open, things could vary, could, things could change a whole lot in Essex. Cause there is a lot of land that could be developed that isn't developed now because you can't park it and there's no sewer there. So um, that said, I just wanted to make sure that when we talk about Essex, we're thinking on a very large scale and not, and not the fact that it, it's going to stay the way it is. Because if we don't do things to protect it, it probably won't stay the way it is when we get more sewage passed. And so just to keep that in the background. That was all. I'm done. And Brendan was nodding his head, so I didn't say anything wrong. And he gave me the thumbs up, so.
And on the typology, you know, while I understand it as an architect, I feel that, you know, there's some sort of unstated commentary that the typology somehow regulates taste and it, it really doesn't. I mean, uh, just because it has a gable roof doesn't mean that it looks like Essex, right? So I, it's not clear to me how that maintains a character, right? I can do all sorts of things within that typology and have nothing that resembles what is my neighbor. You know, so how we get to contextuality without saying you have to have a certain roof type or whatever. There's a lot of design elements that could happen in a positive way that is different, but not necessarily um outside of character. So I, I don't know.
So I'll just, I'll just make one comment to that. That, you know, although we were talking about design guidelines versus building standards, that's one of the benefits of design guidelines is that um, a developer can meet the, the dimensional requirements uh, and um, you know, build a structure and, and technically they're well within their um, their rights to do so. However, by providing the, the guidelines or additional context and saying, this is what this is how we would prefer development to look, to feel, um, not being so specific, but also uh, not allowing it to be uh, just broad it as well. Um, we were, we were having a conversation with Chris early, I think it was actually earlier today. He was talking about an example in a community where um, they had development that was taking place and they were uh, getting a, a number of buildings that just had flat, a flat roof because um, the community had all these regulations in place that restricted height. And so um, although uh, they were regulating the building height, it was also stifling like uh, the aesthetic or the, the visual quality of the, of the area. Uh, because uh, they were, it was just a series of flat, of flat roofs is, instead of um, variations. Um, so I feel like that is where design guidelines are really helpful. Uh, and I think the, the illustrations in the building typologies offer um, like visuals and, and just visual rep- representations to developers to, to note that this is, this is what we mean when we say we want something that's we want something that's built, that's in tune or in character with, uh, the town of Essex. But not saying like it has to be, um, um, not, not being so specific in terms of like uh, the color of the building or the building materials, but just offering some guy, uh, some guys as to what we, what we'd like development to look at.
I mean, I understand that, but what a typology is, is a, um, it's a diagram, right, and a building isn't a diagram, the things that make it look in character are things like fieldstone foundation affectations or trim around the windows and and certainly that'd be an impossible design guideline to, to me, but having a, a gabled roof as a drawing doesn't necessarily get you anything, I mean, I can build a vinyl sided, um, no trim, um, plastic building that looks like that diagram, but doesn't give me the character of anybody of anything, you know, so I'm just wondering where the middle ground is on that, like, is there some space in which you're diagramming Essex and not diagramming a generic conceptual house, like building, you know, I don't know. Anyway, it's a
I think the example that Courtney shared from Newton with their, um, their plans where they had like pictures of places in Newton to help draw that connection, I think that can be really useful because you're right, like these regulations only gets you so far, but the more that you can try to tell the story to the developer who's coming in and say like, this is what we have today, how can you help to make something that's going to fit in with what we have today and not that pole barn that's going to stick out like a sore thumb, but it may have a gable roof.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think it's tricky.
Yeah. And we're open to any suggestions that you may have to like help that with your architecture expertise and something that we also do is try to, as we work through and refine the regulations, we try to model like this is what could be built with these regulations, or this is what you're not allowing by having these regulations or parameters, um, to kind of help you visualize what you would be getting with whatever regulations you end up adding.
And then on the flip side of that, there is the, um, you know, it, how affordable is Essex if you're defining certain characteristics that nobody can build to unless you have the money to build to that characteristic and um.
Yeah, yeah, and so you can also think about what buildings are you most um, concerned with, maybe it's just commercial that you have these, but how, like housing, you're happy with pretty much anything, it's someone's house, so they can have that expression to live in whatever house they want.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good thought, I like that.
Thanks.
I really like Andrea, how, you know, how we can see, um, form-based coding or zoning with what we have to what it could be, and it just seems less daunting than doing districts that would be really impossible, probably, um, I do like the idea about types of streets that is a beginning place that is a possibility that we can work with, I think doable that, um, uh, but I, I am all for the illustrations and the layouts and examples as the visuals as much as possible, um. It just explains it so much more better than, I mean, I'm a visual person, but it just, it's going to be helpful to so many people.
Thanks, Shelley, that's great. Any other thoughts?
Anyone else? Meg? Can, can you guys hear Meg?
Not really.
Can you wanna come up here? Sorry. That, that, those, those aren't working, she has, it's, it's right here, she has this, speaking to the computer. Andrea, can you hear her?
Uh, can, I don't hear anything right now.
She's coming.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. So, uh, I am just so wedded to, uh, traditional zoning, having dealt with it my professional life, but so, and I'm still trying to understand the form base. So, couple of areas of questions, one was you were talking about, uh, requirements and guidelines. And when we get into the area of guidelines, particularly around design, um, I'm wondering what the incentive is to developers, particularly commercial, maybe even some residential, uh, for them to follow suggested guidelines, I mean, oftentimes it's, uh, profit driven and constructing something that, you know, as soon as you start putting in more design elements, the cost goes up. Um, and then I think Courtney was talking about the example in Newton where they were forced to do flat roofs because of the height limitations, but I'm pretty sure in many, uh, zoning bylaws or ordinances and even in the mass building code, that uninhabitable space doesn't count as your, um, you're under the height restriction. So that, that was one area I was thinking about. One thing, I still don't understand form-based zoning enough, but, um, one thing that's really important in traditional zoning is consistency and predictability. Um, so that people know, uh, what's expected of them, and then when things are contested, what's going to be allowed and it's not going to be allowed and you know, the whole issue of zoning and individual zoning and stuff like that, so those are just thoughts that I am having as I'm sitting here listening and trying to understand the whole new, new topic zone. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's really great, and I think those are all good questions, I think that um, right now there is a lot of ambiguity in the bylaw, and so I do think that moving to any of these approaches or other ways, I think that whatever path you choose, you'll be helping with the ambiguity of your bylaw, because there's a lot that's left up into interpretation, and I think the more that you can do things like on this slide where you do have clearer standards, that does have more predictability. And then, um, I think Courtney, you could probably speak to this a little more, but I do think that whenever you have guidelines for the most part um, and clearer criterion to take your town character, for example, I think developers do want to try to comply with that because they don't want to automatically face the public opposition or grief from the, the process, uh, but it, it is tricky whenever it's a guideline and not a requirement. Um, do you have anything you want to add, Courtney?
Um, I'll just note that, um, that we're trying to, um, walk a, a, a tight rope, like we wanna, we, uh, there we wanna provide you with tools to use to regulate the things that uh, the community cares about and, and wants to protect, but we also um, don't want to be too restrictive, um, it's, so an example might be in the general zoning district, these are the uses that are permitted, and as long as you meet the dimensional requirements, uh, you can have that use, but, uh, some added regulations to that could be ensuring that if a commercial use is immediately adjacent to a residential use, there, there's a specific type of buffer that has to be in place, or that commercial building needs to be set back further uh, and, and, and maybe like parking is located in a different area on the site so that, uh, it's not disruptive or it's screened or it's it's not a nuisance to, to its neighbor, so I feel like there's, there's a, a balance that can be reached where, um, you know, if you, the, the town wants to maintain this less restrictive general zoning district, that's fine, but also ensure that, um, you know, things are clearly defined as best as possible, uh, because right now you're the, the uses which I'll talk about in, in just a bit are, you know, pretty broad. But, um, like specifying the class of use, the intensity of that use, that's appropriate would then start to limit the types of uh, uses that would go in or be most appropriate in, in certain location.
So in a standard like that, would you say have a, a column that was related to commercial adjacent to residential, commercial adjacent to commercial, that kind of thing? You know, to define what can and can't, cannot happen?
Yes, there, there are, there are bylaws and ordinances that, um, that regulate based on you know, whether it's a corner lot that's, uh, adjacent to a residential, a traditional, uh, residential area or whether, uh, it's a lot that uh, has frontage along like a major thoroughfare or, um, roadway, you know, it, um, eh, there are specific regulations or, or, uh, additional uh, things that, that use may need to require, uh, that use may need to meet based on its location to other uses, so you don't restrict the use, but you say, uh, if it's adjacent to, uh, uh, a different type of use, then these are the things that, these are the measures that need to be in place in order for you to, to operate in this particular space.
I, I, I think I understand what you're saying, but it also gets complicated with our general use district because of the whole idea of because it's not a, it's a general use district that any particular property can be, its use can be changed. So, um, if you start, if you if you start to promote, promote regulations that say, um, you know, a, a commercial, there's some sort of limitations on a commercial, um, a commercial lot that is next to a residential lot, say, and then there's the potential that either the commercial lot turns into a residence, and we've seen that along Main Street, places that used to be shops are now homes. Um, or the residence turns into a commercial lot, and then there's the properties on either side of that and around them, so it gets very complicated if you say that, because we still have this ability of any property to officially change its use. So that, that's a little, you, you see what I'm saying, it's a, it makes things muddy. No.
Change of view?
No, no, it's by site plan review, you can change your use and, and it's just a site plan review, and so that, that's something that we'll talk about more. It should be by permit, I think. That's me, but talk about that, that, that's something that we're going to talk about as far as what we're going to bring to town meeting for articles, but anyway, so.
What were the other things you, you said you needed help with to, you just gave us this limit, you, so street type did be like that, did be like
Building street type. Yeah, building types, having them be more illustrative and expanding beyond the, um, six that you have currently. The street type idea to try to kind of get around the fact that you have the uses everywhere. This could be one way to start to narrow down where certain things can occur in town without going the full district approach. Um, so, and to have a specific example, you could say on scenic roads, we only want these building types allowed to, to try to regulate. Um, and then this idea of the guidelines to show examples of architecture and um, maybe having some landscaping requirements, building standards to actually shape the, what development looks like. So this will be a combination of both the standards, requirements that we had on the previous slide and then some recommendations to, um, with, that would serve as guidelines.
With the design guidelines we talked about, but could we do some things that are design standards just as well? And mix that?
Yeah, you could, um, do a mixture of design standards and then, um, guidelines, yeah.
The street types, I think Chris talked about this a little bit in his form-based code presentation, that having the kind of requirements for how to build a certain street type is not helpful, but more having it be a kind of table of how to define a street type and then specifying what can go on that street type, because we're not building new roads that, to meet those dimensions, like in this example, table was, I think, one of, kind of not exactly the kind of table we'd want to wind up with, but it would be more like this is how you classify this, these are the characteristics of this kind of road, and on this kind of road, you'll allow these types of uses.
Yep, exactly, so thinking back to what Courtney shared about place types, I could see you adapting that idea to road types and then having a more narrative description of these are the types of roads and the attributes of those roads, and because of that, these are the types of uses we do or don't want to see.
We're going to go that far though, wouldn't we just define the roads in town? Which roads are what, so it's a specific way, right, oh, that's what you're saying, we're not just going to say. But even that's twenty fourteen.
Right, you would probably just come up with a classification.
Yeah, because we do have, it's not in the bylaw, but we have this, the what's that?
If the road changed. Uh, if the road changed, that would that would change the road, then by law.
Yeah, I mean, the two kind of major commercial corridors you state. And how many? How, whether you're going to change the width of a road, you'd have to use some rule of thumb now to establish what the rules are. So that they're just established.
Is that something, um, Andrea, if we like that idea that you would come up, look at all the roads and sort of classify them and then we would look at that, or is that something we do? What's that next step?
I think we, we, if you want to pursue this, then that's why we would need direction tonight, so that we can think through what the best way to implement this would be. Because I think this is something that we, we have not seen done a lot, but we think that it could be an interesting and like kind of innovative way to handle your unique zoning situation, and so I think if you like this idea of trying to regulate by street type or have different street type categories to, um, and manage the types of growth that happens on different streets, then I think that's, we would take that direction and then go back and have some internal discussions to see how we could implement this, but we haven't gotten to that point, because we didn't want to get too far down this road without having your blessing to, that you're interested in this, if that makes sense.
Yes, I think about like how you, how we would then, um, educate people, and I just think it, it makes sense, like they could visualize it, they know these streets, they can identify with it. There might be discussion that they don't feel it's in this category, go in this category, but I think it's an easier thing to talk about that everyone could understand.
And I think we could, um, I think we would probably start with the DOT has a street classification system as a bare minimum starting point of then just looking at kind of the characteristics from knowing a street inventory perspective, and then we could go from there. And then we could go from there and figure out like, maybe you don't want to designate everything, but maybe you want to have certain roads designated and manage what happens on those roads, but then the rest are kind of left as is or um handled in a different way. So I think we could go a lot of different ways in this um but we would probably start with looking at the initial classification and then refine from there.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to see how successful it'd be, it'd be helpful to see that road classification key overlay with the existing uses to see is there, you know, what classification of road already has commercial, like heavy commercial on it? Are there kind of outliers? Or are the majority of them, you know, just thinking about it, I think the majority of them are already on larger roads because they need the the access. But to see visually how much compatibility there already is between those two things.
And then we create a special permit to change a road. You you know, like there are dirt roads in Essex and um but if it's in a general zoning district and they wanna change to a commercial use and they wanna improve the road, you know, like how do we allow that to happen or not happen or whatever? I mean, you know, certainly the issue with the septic changing to sewer could significantly impact who wants to build where and, you know, and obviously the standards will help um protect certain residential areas, but other areas where we don't care, you know, how do we define what happens to the roads there, I guess.
Yeah, I think that we could approach it a few different ways. You could set in the um bylaw if X improvements are made to a roadway, then that could automatically trigger like, oh, this roadway now is paved, it's not a dirt road anymore, so now it's this other category. Um or you could have a a process like I'm I don't know if you all have this, but if you have a private road and the owners want to request that the town take it over to make it public, like there's a process for that. So you could maybe have a simplified process to go between street types. That could be another thing that we could try to address in the bylaw.
Would that go in regulations then outside of the bylaw, or it has to be voted on in in the bylaw change?
Um I think we would need to kind of look at maybe some different options for that. And this this is something, if you do wanna go down this path, then we would wanna have an in-depth conversation about like those different options, the pros and cons of having it be something that is decided just by the planning board, if it stays in the zoning bylaw or if it is something that should be maybe more appropriate in another section of the bylaw.
Well, I think, I mean, I think we're gonna find that certain uses are better managed through this and certain uses are gonna be better managed through other tools, like thinking about, you know, like Eastern Ave, there are sections that are commercial, there are sections that are industrial, there are sections that are residential, there are sections that are farmland, you know. Each of the kind of, a lot of the roads already have, so but that's all one road here, all along Eastern Ave. And Southern Ave too, like have a real mix of them. So maybe we're able to regulate sort of industrial use, you know, just within certain kind of gross classifications. And then when we're getting into other certain kinds of classifications, like density of residential, which I think we're gonna have to go into a different method of of managing that.
So I I was just gonna say, I think it's gonna be uh uh a hybrid of of two, of of more things, like so for like the example that's on screen now, uh it's it's talking about road type, but it's also talking about the character of that place. So because this is a is uh the pic what's pictured is is an, it's like a major arterial that goes through through town. There are certain elements that are also enforced. The buildings to the left all meet, so there are no uh there are no gaps or, you know, they're all uh it's like a build to line for the buildings on the left. So um there's a constant inconsistency uh frontage along the uh major arterial. There are also like pedestrian features that are have to be incorporated uh that help to break down the scale of the space. They have they have street trees incorporated. There are um there are awnings that help provide additional, like that help to provide scale to uh the space. So I think there there's gonna be like a mixture of different things. So in addition to road types, there's also you thinking about uh use and just because um I don't I don't think one entire street has to be designated as a specific like I I don't think it's necessary to say uh all of Apple Street is a type A uh road type. It can be different. I feel like uh it can be different segments of Apple Street based on the existing character, the existing uses, as well as how the how the town would like for that area to grow and develop over time. So you know, um where there's already uh more of a rural or agricultural use, then that would be the general uh the general characteristic of that that particular segment or of Apple Street. And and I feel like that and it that helps, that's when place types kind of come in um or I think that's where having designated place type in addition to some of these other things would help um get at the overall goal or vision uh for the town.
I wonder next time uh if you could, that would be a great example of like like Eastern Ave with five sections broken up, you know, so we can see what that looks like and how we would break that up and I didn't know you could do that. But it's an interesting idea. I just wonder if that gets complicated and how I I just need to see that. I I just don't understand how that works in those lines, but I guess you wanna know, like, do we like this idea?
I think it's worth MAPC exploring it more and giving us more information on street types and, you know, talking about what the state standards are for different street types and how it could apply here. And uh what I'm hearing is that some of our streets might qualify for being a street type. So you can say like Belcher Street is is a skinny little residential street and probably should remain as a skinny little residential street cuz when they did a detour down Belcher Street, everyone was all up in arms when the pole was taken out and people had to drive down there. They're trying to do fifty miles an hour on a road that's posted for fifteen. Um so there may be some street types, some streets in Essex that are suitable for street types and others where it's not necessarily going to work cuz Eastern Avenue, Western Avenue, those those roads that are already developed with residences, businesses, industrial, a whole smorgasbord of stuff. It might be very difficult to actually call them a street type. And then so that might not be the suitable mechanism for.
But would it be called a mixed role, mixed use type, like our mix?
We don't also, if we we can type it.
These are all rapid one we get down, but I think the purpose of what we're talking about right now is to set that.
Yes.
I think that first and foremost, I had three options that would just then if this was the one that everybody everybody seemed to jump on. The uh you know, design guidelines, everybody seemed to choke on a little bit. Uh I don't know what, I forget what the other one was, but building type, but this one seemed to be the most cohesive of the group.
Yeah, that and use type as well. I mean, I think the use type in conjunction with the street type.
Or you could put all these together.
Right. Bring them towards a framework.
Yeah, and 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 this is this is our first look at it, and this is our sort of initial reaction and um more information is gonna help. I think the the other thing that we need to keep in mind as the planning board and zoning ambassadors is is again, this two-pronged approach that I've talked about before is that we have MAPC guidance through June of twenty twenty four to sort of craft our long-term vision. And that's not all going to go into effect or be written into the bylaw between now and June twenty fourth. So we have to keep in mind what we're going to bring to town meeting as the planning board and or board of selectmen. Um and then also how that fits into the bigger picture, but what the the long-term big picture looks like. Um you know, so it's we we in these meetings, we need to explore sort of the ultimate goal, and then what we need is planning board, we need to keep ourselves grounded in what is going to actually happen at town meeting and and work. Because I I just keep going back to our report in Manchester, we we don't wanna tackle more than the community can absorb at one time. So we wanna make sure that we're very measured in in what we're going forward.
Right, but this is getting us
Right.
towards the bigger view as we bring little tiny pieces.
Right, and I'm saying this is big picture stuff, but when we talk about this big picture stuff, we don't have to immediately translate it into how we get this to pass. We wanna think about that sort of long-term, big-picture vision of what Essex could look like or what we want it to look like or what the community wants to to look like based on feedback. But we don't need to necessarily at this point understand how we write that into the bylaw yet. That will come. Yeah, this is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, even if we did an initial mapping of road types and use types al- along those roads, that might you know, point out a lot.
Right.
I think that we've also heard from everybody that integrating into this, whatever framework this is, the kind of the graphics, the in improved kind of specificity on what's allowed and what isn't allowed.
Mm-hmm.
All. And I think there's also gonna be room for some form-based code in terms of what do you want? Like if we're talking about these major streets where there's a mishmash of things, you can say, okay, you can have a mishmash of uses, but we want it to look a little more consistent. Like we want the industrial to still have this sort of like have the parking in the back or the reverb or or this sort of step back or style facade so that even though there's a number of different uses allowed in those areas, it it doesn't have to have to look like you're driving through an industrial zone, not a residential zone, but you know.
But I think this is a good start.
Yeah, it's great.
Like, it's so much more, it it's so much you could wrap your head around it instead of zoning districts cuz uh you just are like, no way.
I think that's what we were kind of thinking. We were thinking this would be kind of a stepping stone to make some improvements, knowing that it'll be a bigger challenge to do the full-on zoning districts, so.
Yes. Just for one second. Switches over fine when they leave it.
Okay. Yeah, we have to make a technical adjustment. Excuse me for a moment here.
So I turned off my Microsoft. Makes a uniformity into this without doing this.
Simone, can you speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
People want the flexibility to change.
Yeah.
Thank you, Harry.
And if they put on a screen that
Can you guys remember?
And they're gonna go, wait a minute.
I think you should do it. It's just more guidelines to.
Simone?
Yeah, I'm speaking.
She's talking and we're not hearing her.
Important that people understand that uses will be grandfathered in, so nobody's literally can't do what they're currently doing.
So that means I can tell you guys what I want.
I wanna be with them to change. I lose.
I turn I turn my mic back on.
Can you hear me now? No. But talking, but you can't hear me.
Turn your volume way down.
Can you hear now?
Now Simone speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
So Simone?
Yes. Can you hear me?
So that was.
See if the folks from M P C can speak.
Can.
Simone, can you?
I can hear you.
Check M P C.
M A P Andrea, Courtney?
Can you hear us?
Yeah. Courtney?
Yes.
So how? Is that, I feel like I'm getting a repeat.
In the program room.
Oh, I have to.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. So that this works without the feedback. Okay, good.
So everybody should use their microphone.
Okay.
Now that it's started and we're all set, let's go.
Okay, so let's let's hop back on because we're um we're at eight, we're at quarter to nine now. So um Andrea and Courtney, you had a few more slides to go through. So do you want to um to walk us through those? I think you've gotten some feedback from us and and we can clarify that more, but you had um a little bit more to talk about graphics, diagrams and the format, and then we also need to talk about next steps. So why don't we move along to that, if that's all right?
Yep, so um I think that I'll turn it over to Courtney now and he can talk about the work to consolidate your uses under a use table and consolidate your dimensional regulations into tables.
Hey, uh okay, so I I did a first pass uh at a use uh at the town's use table, use table or table of uses and uh the existing zoning districts. Um and basically, we're proposing uh a a three-tiered use classification that organizes uses into different levels. So at level one, you have uh a broad and general use classification, like residential, business, industrial. Um and then level two, which is which uh which are the are the uh gray and then you drill down to level two, which um includes subgroups within uh a use classification. And this is based on common characteristics like um seasonal residential versus household living versus um uh group, group um group housing. And so um drilling even further down to level three, um it it lists uh specific uses for a use category. So things like single family, two-family, multifamily, um um mixed use. Um and uh this this offers um organizing uses in this way offers a a more robust structure and uh flexibility uh in terms of uses. So um thi- this is a draft that I'll share once we uh wrap up. But um I basically went through the existing bylaw and started to organize things uh uses based on what's already mentioned or existing within the bylaw. And then um I left. What's already mentioned or existing within the bylaw and then um I left areas where. There are things to consider or there are current gaps. So for instance, um. Seasonal residential, you know, and this only applies to um the Canomo Point uh zoning districts. But there are seasonal uses, uh seasonal residence, dental uses. Um, there are. More specific types of businesses and um under commute, commercial uses, so. Um. Lodging, which includes hotels and motels. And then one of the things that we've heard um throughout the process is a way to deal with short-term rentals or. Um, um. A bed and breakfast, um. Uses, so organizing what's existing and then adding additional detail. A detail to uses that are missing. Um, so this is not something that's currently. Uh, listed in the existing bylaw, public institutional and civic uses. So group uh grouping, um, things like the uh. The wind energy conservation systems, the uh radio tele telecommunications and cellular. Uh, facilities under uh utilities and services, uh creating that. Second level um tier for educational facilities. Uh, so that that's private schools, public schools, um. Identifying uh healthcare facilities, whether it's a private hospital. Or nursing home. I think private hospital is one of those things that's listed under uses as requiring a special permit. So just better organizing some of the information uh that's present and then looking. At opportunities and gaps um for additional uses to be added. Um, and I think this will help. The town in a lot of ways, both in um creating stronger definitions for uses. And also identifying um um or including more modern uses. That address issues like the, the problem that uh the town ran into with the uh public safety building. Um. Uh, another thing that um I think is important to consider is. So marijuana establishments, for for example, um, it could be organized or or. Uh. Under different uses based on whether uh it's, it's being cultivated, whether it's a re. Whether it's being sold, um. And that would, um, so having a use that addresses. Um. That, I guess comes at, comes at it at different uh angles isn't, is also important. Um. And then in terms of. The zoning districts. Um, again, uh, before they were all kind of scattered throughout the the existing bylaw. So this uh consolidates all of the zoning districts as well as the dimensional requirements into one table. Um, so that uh things can be easily uh compared. Um, and then based on uh the established district, you know, this could be. The overall summary table that comes at the end of the the zoning district chapter and um. To make it uh a bit easier or more simplified for a person looking for um specific. Dimensional requirements for uh their district. This table can also be broken up based, based on uh the specific district uh in the bylaw. But uh consolidating it um just makes it easier for all the information to be in one. One location and uh it makes it easier to compare. Um. The required dimensions for each district. And I I think that's it, like um I've organized the, all of the notes that were already. Um, listed and. Sorry, can't answer you. Can you let me share my screen one more time? I, there was just one last thing I wanted to point out, sorry. Um, also just listing, um, one thing that I forgot to mention about the use table is. Having it organized so that people could uh easily look and see where um like what uses are permitted. What um. What's permitted but has a, an additional standard. So that gets at what we were talking about having a. A commercial use next door to a um a residential use. So that might be something that's flagged in the general district with a note or a standard noting like. Uh, this can, these two uses can be uh next door to one another or adjacent to one another. However, uh it also requires a, a buffer or screening. Um. And uh one other thing about the table is uh it's gonna be including hyperlinks over to the side or. Are areas within the bylaw that uh people will need to re- reference um for additional details. Um. So. I don't think I'll share the right screen or my screen at all.
We saw it the first time, but I don't think I went through the second time.
Okay. Okay, sorry, but this is what I was speaking to, so the. Listing what's permitted versus what has the additional standards tied to it. And then also having a column that specifies uh. Uh, other areas of the bylaw that need to be referenced or um need to be reviewed.
So in this, it would just, it would just be a table. There wouldn't be any graphics or illustrations. It's just a. Take, uh, just a chart and then.
Well, it's um this, again, this is just the first pass, so it. It could, it could be this in combination with some of the building typologies. It, we, we're just presenting uh options and then we also wanted to just give you a taste of like. This is what it looks like as is kind of similar to just the reorganization of the bylaws, so. Um. But it it could be as simple as, you know, just a table. It could be the table in addition to graphics. Um.
Well, it's the kind of thing we could start with a table of dimensional requirements. And once that's established, then we can add graphics to it.
Yeah, no, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Or whatever, yeah.
By bringing it all into the tables to it will make it easier for you all to kind of see. How your regulations compare across because right now the bylaw had everything sort of scattered throughout. So by bringing the tables together, that will send this to you after this meeting, so you can kind of do that comparison to see. Maybe where you do wanna do some refinements. So it's just another way to make it a little easier to digest the information.
Great.
Any other questions or things you have, Courtney, for that piece? All right, so we'll send that to you after this meeting and then you can give us any feedback, but know that that was just the first pass to bring it together. Um, so I'll go back to sharing my screen and we'll finish out the slides here. So I think Courtney, you were gonna talk about um some ideas for continuing to build on what we heard in forum one.
Yes, so uh I think overall the the mapping exercise was was really um successful. And so uh we were thinking of having our second engagement point or um. Sometime this summer, um, I think in in July is when we kind of tossed the idea around. And we were thinking it would be great, since people will be out for the summer, it'll, it's, you know, it's. It's hard just in general to get people to come to public meetings, so if there were, if there were an event. Uh, taking place during the summer, it would be great to kind of um meet, meet people where they are. Um, introduce um, introduce, give, give a brief update about the project and where we are in the process. Uh, and then gather feedback and also offer an opportunity for people to um provide additional feedback. Um, at their leisure in um. Uh, using a survey and and uh an additional engagement exercise. Um, I think one of the things that we were hoping to, we were hoping the exercise would build on itself. So uh initially, we started out with descriptive words, so the next thing that we would wanna um ask. People to provide input on are um some of the more visual uh representations of. Of spaces and places throughout town um that get at. Uh, what they feel is is the true essence of of Essex. Um, so uh using things like a a visual preference survey that that demonstrates. Uh, scale and density uh and how how that looks. Uh, as well as asking people to submit um photo, photographs of existing structures or spaces in town. Um, so that um that would all be folded into um helping define place types. Um, being able to point to specific locations, um, if, if we decide to go the route of. Uh, the different street, the different street types throughout town, throughout town and um. And again, um, just building on uh a lot of the things that we've already heard. Um, I think one of the things we were asking, if there are specific events um taking place. Um, whether it's something that's hosted through the li- uh the library or a a festival or um. It would be good to kind of start planning so that we could capitalize off of things like that.
We'll, we'll think about that. There's not, um, eh, the, the events that are held in Essex tend to attract. People from other towns too, so there's not really events that I can think of and anyone else is willing to chime in. The, there aren't really events that are resident-specific and if there are events that are resident-specific. It would be like a school event or a library event or something like that that where you're not gonna get a good cross-section of townspeople. Um, you know, if it's a school event, you'll get young parents, that kind of thing, so we need to think about that and um. Um, and we'll probably talk about that more at our next planning board meeting to try and brainstorm a little about. What's a good way to connect with the community and and zoning ambassadors are obviously more than welcome to chime in with any suggestions on that too. But it's something I think we wanna think about a little um and and talk about um and then get back to you on that if that's okay.
Yes, is again, this is just placing it on, on, I I wasn't expecting you to have or or know. The answer tonight or have it figured out. It's just putting it it on your radar and kind of. Giving you a taste of what we were thinking, um, maybe uh somewhat of a non-traditional engagement activity for the next. Forum.
Right. Yeah. Uh, that, that needs some thought, so um. We will think on that and uh circle back.
Right, um, so just to go over kind of where we'll go from here, it's been really helpful. Getting the feedback on those initial ideas so that we can start to put some refinements on them and bring some um. More clear options for the questions that you raised tonight to the next meeting. I think we are planned to meet again next month, June twenty eighth, so let us know if that time doesn't work. Um, and then I think we'll try to start talking about site plan review and special permit options at that time as well. Kind of the similar um process, give you some options, get some direction and then do a refinement after that. Um, we'll continue to meet with the working groups, trying to schedule those meetings. We'll schedule the next zoning ambassador's work session. And that um hopefully that group can help prepare for the next engagement event too alongside you all. Um, and then we wanted to share an update with the project management team. Uh, so I emailed the steering committee for the group, but we've had some staffing changes at M A P C. Our housing division manager left for the city of Boston, so I've taken on the interim housing division role. So Courtney will be serving as project manager uh moving forward as we're shifting some of these responsibilities. And then Chris was um always going to come on and help as we get into the weeds of the form-based code and different zoning options. So you met Chris last week, you may be seeing him a little bit more. So um we wanted to let you all know that as a group and um are happy to ask, answer any questions or talk more about the staffing changes a bit. But otherwise, that's all we have. Thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was so helpful.
Yeah, this was a really good meeting. I think you gave us a lot of. A lot to think about, an awful lot to think about. So, and we appreciate all your um, your help.
Andrea, does that mean we're not gonna see you? Is that?
Yeah.
That's it? Oh, yeah, congra- yeah, that was it when you said you off. All right, thanks.
No, um, we're still figuring out the transition. I think that you'll probably be hearing from Courtney a lot more. He'll be taking on more of the kind of project management emails. You'll get fewer emails from me, definitely. Uh, especially like Lisa and Simone, uh, but we're still figuring out what all of the transition means. But hopefully this won't be the last. You just may not see my face as much. You'll get to hear from Chris and Courtney more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.